We'll start with a moment of reflection. Thank you. Next, we'll move on. If you have any disclosure of the key or key area of interest, you can do it now or at any point in time through the meeting. And then we're going to move on to confirmation of the agenda. And I do have one item to add. Thirteen point one, a matter pertaining to labor relations, and that is paramedic services. We have some exciting news there, hopefully. And so if I could have a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. Moved by Councilor Wilhelm, second by Councilor Duncan. Those in favor, let's carry. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. And we've got items five point one to five point one two and the minutes from June second, two thousand and twenty two. Does anyone want to see anything pulled? Counselor Casenberg?
Good morning, Warden H. Simpson. I'm rather interested in item five point eight, which is about retirement residences and the funding model of the province for same. And so I wouldn't mind having an opportunity to encourage my colleagues to support that one.
Okay, does anyone else want to see anything pulled? I don't see anything. Is it okay? I'm going to say we're going to discuss that right now, Counselor Casenberg. Is that all right? So if you want to make your comments on that, and then we can accept it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, Warden H. Simpson. So when I read the resolution and thought about some of my experiences over the pandemic, and certainly I've had family near and dear to me that has sort of faced the problem of entering the long-term care system. I realized that that there's some wisdom in what Chadham, I think it's Chadham Kent said. Yes, Chadham Kent, sorry. You know, something needs to be done about this because we're seeing increasingly the requirements because of lack of long-term care beds of many of our elders needing to stay in their retirement residences. And this is starting to put some financial strain on families and individuals across the province. So I did find that the appeal to the province that was recommended in the resolution from Chadham Kent actually made a lot of sense to me because it's happening. It's happening practically. And then there's financial issues that are waving across these people that wouldn't be there if they had a long-term care bed or if they had home care services. So I think that that I'd like to encourage my colleagues to consider supporting that one in particular.
Anyone else have any comments on that particular item? I'm going to make a quick comment, Counselor Casenberg. So I sit on Spruce Lodge, an not-for-profit housing entity. And that is retirement living, for the most part, and it caters to all three sectors. Market rent, you know, affordable and high needs. And we have one unit where the agreement ran out with the province because we cut the mortgage paid off. They had no continuity plan whatsoever. Like, I mean whatsoever. We're almost close to the end of the agreement on Woodland Towers Two with no, nothing in sight as to what may happen. But the problem we face there is because of the way the funding agreements were set up, you couldn't put a whole lot in capital reserve because they wouldn't allow you to. So now those buildings need a bit of work without the money available to readily deal with that refinancing. So I'm supporting you. I'm not a hundred percent myself. Any other comments? So Counselor Casenberg, you're going to make a motion to support that? Okay, do I have a second here for that? Counselor Wilhelm seconds on. Any further discussion? That we support that has come in from Chatham County. Those in favor, that's carried. Perfect. So I'm going to go back to the motion. The council receives the consent agenda items five point one to five point one two and approves the June second, two thousand and twenty-two council minutes moved by. Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor McKenzie. You had your hand up before and I didn't get it. Those in favor? That's carried. All right. Okay, we're moving on. And next is public meetings, hearings, and delegation. And we don't have any, right?
Correct.
So now we're going to move on to planning services. And seven point one point one, Perth County Wind Turbine Policy Report. The heat's frying my brains the last couple days. Who's doing that? Sally?
Sally, as well as?
The WSP, huh?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, there's Matt. And there's Sally. Good morning. We're ready for the wind turbine policy report.
Morning, Warden and members of council. I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who is the author of the report and here to explain to you today.
Thanks, Sally. Morning, Matt.
Good morning, Warden. How are you? If I can share my screen, I'll do that and begin my presentation. You should be able to see that now. So, good morning. I'm here to speak on the wind turbine policy report, which should be part of your agenda package. Today, I'm just going to go over a bit of the background that informed the report, the policy context, some analysis, conclusions, and recommendations. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have afterwards as well. So you'll recall in April that council received a delegation regarding wind turbine policies in the county official plan. The key issues that were raised in that delegation from a planning perspective are related to whether the official plan is too permissive regarding wind turbines and whether or not it prevents local municipalities from imposing more restrictive measures through their zoning bylaws. And so if you'll recall, I believe the specific request was to add additional setbacks for wind turbine operations, larger study areas when a wind turbine is proposed. And I think there were two sort of tiers to that, a wind or a noise setback and a study setback. So we were, we were asked by Sally, by the county, to prepare a report exploring these issues and the policy options. The purpose of this presentation is to present the findings of the wind turbine policy report to council. The report includes a summary of policies that apply to wind turbines at the provincial and county level, as well as we looked a little bit at the local municipality zoning bylaws as well. We provide an overview of concerns raised regarding the local municipality's ability to regulate wind turbines as a land use. And we provide a recommendation with regards to the need for an amendment to the county official plan. And I want to be clear that what this report does not do is get into whether or not the concerns raised have validity or merit. We're not, we're not talking about technical or scientific evidence related to potential impacts from wind turbines. And we're not assessing the appropriateness of the restrictions requested by the delegate. That kind of analysis would require additional expert specialties and tends to be a lot more involved. So you're probably aware of a lot of the controversy that came up prior to the Renewable Energy Act and discussions about what kinds of impacts wind turbines have. But for the purposes of this presentation and this report, we're really talking about the authority of the council, of the county council and authority of local municipalities to regulate wind turbines as a land use. So at the provincial level, the Planning Act provides the county and local municipalities with the authority to establish and enforce land use planning policies and regulations through your official plans and zoning bylaw. It does not explicitly discuss wind turbines or alternative energy generation. It does describe matters of provincial interest, which broadly supports renewable energy in general. It refers to the supply, efficient use, and conservation of energy and water. It refers to mitigation of greenhouse gas emissions and adapting to a changing climate. Also, at the provincial level, the Green Energy Act in two thousand and nine exempted renewable energy generation facilities and projects from certain planning act provisions, such as official plans and zoning bylaws. And you're probably quite familiar with that from when that was introduced. In two thousand and eighteen, the Green Energy Act was repealed by the provincial government. And the provisions of the Planning Act, which provided exemptions for renewable energy projects, were removed. So those exemptions were removed from the Planning Act. This reestablished municipalities as the key review and approval body for things like wind turbines as a land use. This change required some transition regulations. And so Ontario Regulation one twenty-one nineteen and one twenty-two nineteen provide the regulations to address wind turbine projects that were already in process at the time of the legislative change. And essentially stated that the old, you know, the old rules would continue to apply to something that was either underway or already established. But this does not apply to any new wind turbine projects. The provincial policy statement, which is the overarching guiding document for planning act applications, does not explicitly discuss wind turbines, but like the Planning Act, it does talk about providing opportunities for the development of energy, including renewable energy systems and alternative energy systems. It also speaks to land use compatibility. And it states that major facilities, including energy generation and transition systems, transmission systems must avoid and minimize or mitigate potential adverse effects, risks to public health and safety, and ensure long-term viability. And so what this means is that if a wind turbine is found to have adverse effects on adjacent land uses, then planning authorities can establish policies and ensure that those adverse impacts are minimized or mitigated. At the county level, the county Perth official plan permits on-farm electrical generation facilities as part of a farm unit. It permits all existing and new electric power facilities in any land use designation. Of course, that would be subject to any other regulatory requirements. And it provides direction for small and commercial wind generation, wind energy generation systems. And it defines what these systems are. So a small system is small, sort of a household windmill. And a commercial wind energy system is what you're more used to, the large wind turbines and towers. And the policy seventeen point nine, I believe this was the delegation requested that this policy specifically be removed from the official plan. But what this policy does is it allows local municipalities to establish zoning provisions for wind turbines to address noise, location setbacks, and other factors. And this is more detail on that. So the applicant shall review noise attenuation measures. So the onus is put on the applicant to address noise impacts. It allows for setbacks from road allowances, lot lines, and structures, as well as maximum height provisions, which can be established in the local zoning bylaws. The county encourages wind turbine placements that minimize disruption to agricultural uses and normal farm practices. And wind turbines within five hundred meters of a settlement area or any sensitive land use, such as a dwelling or a retirement home or a school, are required to submit a planning study to address the potential impacts. So the policy there addresses all of those potential impacts. And I'm going to get a little bit more into how the municipality would deal with that. So at the local level, the local municipalities in Perth County have different approaches. So North Perth, for example, Perth East and Perth South permit wind turbines through site-specific provisions. So they have adopted amendments to specifically permit wind turbines on particular properties, but they don't have general permission for wind turbines, which means that any application on any other parcel of land would require a zoning bylaw amendment. The municipality of West Perth defines and includes provisions for small and commercial wind energy generating systems. So they do have general zoning provisions. So I'll talk a little bit about what that means. The Green Energy Repeal Act restored municipal planning authority regarding the citing and regulation of renewable energy projects through the Planning Act. The transition regulations that I mentioned provide clarity on the role of municipalities for any existing or in-process wind projects. And I'm not sure if you currently have any that are still subject to those transition regulations. You may not. And the Perth County Official Plan permits electrical power facilities in all land use designations. But wind energy generation systems have specific policies that apply. And the official plan authorizes local municipalities to adopt appropriate zoning for those facilities. So the tools that are available to municipalities, particularly the local municipalities, to establish regulations for governing the development of wind turbines include land use compatibility policies. So I mentioned that in the provincial policy statement, as well as in the county official plan. There are policies that state that really any use that could have adverse impacts on sensitive land uses must minimize or mitigate those impacts. And for wind power specifically, section seventeen point nine of the county official plan provides specific direction on that. Zoning bylaws may impose height restrictions, minimum setbacks, et cetera. And I know setbacks was one of the things that the delegation was asking about. Any of the local municipalities could amend their zoning bylaw to establish setbacks that they feel are appropriate, supported by whatever background work that they feel is adequate or sufficient. And site plan control. So the site plan control bylaw could be amended to specifically require site plan control for any wind turbine proposal. And that could apply to farm properties as well. Generally, farm properties are exempt from site plan control, but you could provide an exemption from that exemption if a wind turbine project is proposed. And so from reviewing the county official plan and looking at how local municipalities have already been addressing things like setbacks and the location of wind turbines in Perth County. We don't feel that any changes are actually required. Any changes to the county official plan are actually required to allow municipalities to regulate wind turbines as a land use. What it looks like from my, my planning perspective is that the policies already establish performance measures and tests that planning authority can use to impose greater setbacks if they feel that's justified. And the deletion of section seventeen point nine would essentially leave it as an open question. The only guiding policies you would have at that point are those general land use compatibility policies of the provincial policy statement and the general, you know, matters of provincial interest in the Planning Act. So in my opinion, section seventeen point nine of the county official plan and the general policies of the county official plan are adequate to ensure or to allow local municipalities and the county to regulate wind turbines in the county and ensure that they do not have negative adverse impacts on sensitive land uses. And so I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so we can all look at each other.
Perfect. Questions for our presenter here from council? Counselor Casenberg?
Thank you, Warden H. Simpson. And thank you for the report. My quick and easy question is this, should a municipality at the lower tier, using the methods that you've described, wish to completely prohibit the, the use or installation of wind turbines in its area? Does it have that authority?
I think the way that the county official plan is written through you, Warden, is that energy generation systems are permitted in any designation subject to criteria. So if a municipality wanted to impose a blanket prohibition on wind turbines across the entire municipality purely through their zoning bylaw, that would need to be justified in terms of demonstrating that anywhere in the municipality would have those adverse impacts. However, if they wanted to apply a a locally initiated official plan amendment to the county official plan, which exempts their municipality from, from wind turbines, they could do that. So they could submit that application and provide the justification that they wish.
Other questions for Matt? Counselor McDermott?
So just to be sure here, if Perth East wanted to have a zoning bylaw that said you need to be two thousand meters away from any kind of habitable in structure, that would be within our ability to put that in our zoning bylaw? Just to be sure.
Through you, Warden. The town could adopt a zoning bylaw amendment that has that kind of a setback. My, my caution is that that should be justified and rationalized in terms of whether that's an appropriate setback or not, because the potential for appeal is, is always there, of course. But there is nothing in the county official plan that would prevent the municipality from establishing a zoning setback in accordance with, you know, ensuring no adverse impacts and everything else that I, that I mentioned there as criteria. So if a local municipality wanted to establish something like a two thousand meter setback, they could go through the process of preparing that amendment, go to public consultation and, and make their decision, make the adoption. And if there are no appeals, that would apply.
Deputy Ward Naggetz?
It would be nice if all four lower tiers could get on the same page and do the same revisions together instead of each of us trying to piecemeal what we want to do. I don't know if that's a possibility. You know, I think we're kind of all stand in the same position. We're all trying to prevent these things from going up. And so let's do it together instead of trying to do four different ones.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, no, interesting report for sure there, Matt. Appreciate it. Yeah, the last thing we want to do is to be totally hindering or prohibiting renewable energy. I mean, that's something that's out of our realm. That being said, the wind turbine, there's so much grayness to it. And as Matt said, you have to prove, you have to make sure that stray voltage, whatever it may be, noise vibrations. It, it becomes very complex getting solid data and solid cases around that. And there is that, that element that we could get in, in cahoots with, well, prove to me that your bylaw stands and you end up in a tribunal. That being said, there is enough cases that you just have to go with that when it comes. You worry about it, but yes, I, we need to act on this sooner than later. We're heavy, heavy livestock community, and there is endless reports around livestock issues with wind turbines, whether it's stray voltage, vibrations, all kinds of things. So I recommend as well, if we can work together at the local level, somehow, of course, we have our own identities. We have to preserve that. I'd be willing to hear what other people have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurley. Any other comments or questions? Don't see any hands going up. I guess my comment would be maybe perhaps if the CAO is all over one of their meetings, let's make me a topic of discussion as to what they would like to do with that area of concern. Because that's more of a lower level thing, so we would leave that back to the lower levels to, to deal with that, come back to planning or whatever. And I had one question, but Matt already answered it when he was responding to Counselor McDermott. And that's the appeal process, because I'm pretty sure if you don't have rules in place that aren't quote-unquote reasonable, you're going to help out. I'd be pretty positive about it. Anyway, I thank you, Matt, for your presentation. It was highly enlightening. Thank you. Sally? And I have a motion here that Perth County Council receives the Perth County Wind Turbine Policy Report, prepared by WSP for information. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor, that is carried. Perfect. Okay, we're going to move on. And excellent agenda is Maggie from Perth County Connect.
Good morning, Warden H. Simpson and County Council.
We're ready for your report.
Amazing. Thank you. So through the warden, I'd just like to provide a brief overview of the PC Connect May update report that's before you this morning. So I'm extremely excited to share that a few weeks ago, on May thirty first, we officially launched a new technology, which enables our PC Connect riders to pre-book their ride, track the bus location in real time, pay for their fare using a variety of different payment methods, and receive service notifications all from their browser or mobile device. So in order to take advantage of these new features, our riders can download the free Blaze Transit app onto their mobile device. Or alternatively, they can leverage the online platform through their desktop computer. So although the new app is available for all of our riders and usage is encouraged for all those who are able to access it, using the app is not required. So riders can continue to call the one eight hundred number to pre-book their seat, or they can simply arrive at the bus stop five to 10 minutes prior to the scheduled pickup time. So not only will the new technology really make riding PC Connect easier and more convenient for our riders, it'll also provide us with improved reporting capabilities so that we can really better understand our riders. We can implement more supported service enhancements, and we can contribute to a long-term sustainability plan of the PC Connect service. So unfortunately, due to the timing, our first app reporting dashboard was not ready in time for this morning's meeting. However, at a high level, in just a few weeks, we have had a hundred and seventy profiles created and seventy unique riders who have actually used the technology to book a ride. So we're certainly seeing a positive uptake in the app to date. And we really look forward to growing these numbers in the next few weeks and over the next months moving forward. In terms of our marketing, we are continuing to push out advertisements through multiple channels, such as radio, print, paid and organic social media advertisements. And we're really emphasizing the affordability of the service right now, especially with the gas prices so high. And we're using them to educate residents on the new technology available. In addition to our mass marketing efforts, we're also really focusing on employer and organization outreach, sorry, through creating relationships and really having direct communication with them to educate them about the service and the benefits that PC Connect can have for their business, their employees, their clients, and so on. As we mentioned in our last update briefly, unfortunately, staffing shortages do continue to affect our service provider, which in turn has resulted in some cancellations specifically on a Ruby service. So we do continue to express our concern to Voyago regarding the cancellations. And we've offered support to help alleviate these issues and challenges they're facing through advertising positions and so on. However, we have been advised that two new drivers are in the process of being onboarded. So the cancellations are expected to subside in the near future. So that does conclude my very brief update for y'all this morning. And I welcome any comments, questions, or concerns that council may have. So that does conclude my very brief update for y'all this morning, and I welcome any comments, questions, or concerns that Council may have.
Thank you, Maggie. Questions for Maggie on her report? Counselor Hurley.
Yeah, no, great. Thanks, Maggie. It's good to see where we're seeing the beautiful trend line increase, and that's the way we need to keep it for sure. What kind of pull can we have as a a county around this staffing issue within Viago, Viago? I I just, I have my concerns. Is it a wage issue? I know there's, everybody's struggling. But this definitely is bad, and it's out of our control, yet we're on the hook financially. Like, if there's something, is there some kind of influence we can have? I don't know, but boy, we want to see these buses not sitting. I I have my concerns. I don't know what the way or direction would be, but boy, I don't know if it's wages or what. I, anybody else have anything? Thank you.
You want to respond to that, Maggie?
Sure, yeah. So through the warden, I totally agree. It's definitely a high concern for us, and and we have been in frequent communication with Vago about the issue. So we have been helping to push out their advertisements through some of our relationships and our different committees that we're involved with and really helping to promote those positions available. Just to your point about our financial obligations, so we don't actually, we aren't paying for those service hours that our service is not running. However, it is still a huge concern for, well, as we try to really promote and build this reliable service, it's a concern for us that it's it's parked in a parking lot due to employers. So it's definitely a concern. We are doing our best to help. As you mentioned, it is out of our control. But we are hopeful that the issues will subside now that they've got some new employers being onboarded.
Other questions or comments? Don't see any. Well, thank you, Maggie. Yeah, I know Maggie spent countless hours dealing with Viago on this, and this was a tender contract, so we really don't have a lot of control over what they pay in wages, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's just, it is what it is, and there's a labor shortage everywhere. It isn't just them. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives a PC Connect May twenty that two thousand and twenty-two updated report moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Deputy Warden Naggetz. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks so much.
And next we have Annette. Corporate Services Update.
Good morning, everyone. Just a brief overview of the department's activities for the month of May. A few highlights. Legislative Services is engaging in a public consultation to refresh the Perth County Grant Program. So that is currently underway, and feedback can be provided via our webpage. Legislative Services hopes to bring you an updated proposal for how to refresh that grant structure in the very near future. Information Technology has been engaging in various security enhancements for the county's webpages. This will reduce the amount of time and effort for maintenance as well as operating costs. A few updates on various projects. The Perry Group Report, that's the I T strat plan, it is coming. So we're looking at mid to late July to circulate the final report with the presentation from the Perry Group coming to council in August. Emergency Management. G I S staff have been working to identify and map primary and secondary locations for emergency operations centers within the county and the four lower tiers. N G nine one one. An update, G I S staff is preparing and validating data which is required for the pending N G nine one one requirements. So N G nine one one, you'll recall that this allows members of the public to communicate with nine one one call centers using more than just their voices, so they can do GPS locations, text messages, photos and videos. So G I S is working on the data for that project. Professional development, you'll actually see that this is a large portion of my report this time around, and I just want to note that a significant number of staff have been attending a variety of professional development programs. You know, from learning more about the downloads of part three offenses to best practices for P O A hybrid court, information sessions on AMP FIPPA and P O A, or sorry, and F O I requirements. I spoke at a law society program. And I I want to emphasize this because I think that it's important for council to see the efforts that staff are taking to remain current, to educate themselves, and to promote the county. So not only does it help to increase our our bench strength of our employees, but it also increases the visibility of the county. Some scheduled highlights for the upcoming month. Legislative Services have begun coordinating the venue and speakers for the seventy-fourth Annual Meeting of the Perth Municipal Association. That meeting is going to take place in a hybrid format on November sixteenth. Stratford Perth Archives Reading Room, they have expanded their hours of services for longer appointment times as well as drop-in access. And Legislative Services has begun engaging in preliminary discussions with the lower tiers for council joint orientation. The Perth County Joint Accessibility Plan will be circulated to the lower tiers in June or July, very, very shortly. And also Legislative Services is going to be providing accessibility training on the dynamic symbol of access to both staff at the upper and lower tiers on June twenty fourth. So I encourage I encourage you to attend and encourage your staff to attend as well. So subject to any questions, that that is my report.
Thank you. Questions? Don't see any hands. I guess they must like the report. No questions. Okay, I have a motion here that Perth County Council receives the legal slash purpose services May two thousand and twenty-two update report moved by Counselor Willhout, seconded by Counselor That's Carrie. Perfect. Moving on again. And we are gonna do the asset management plan update, and I believe Cory's doing that.
Speaking of training, we're waiting for Cory, Cory. There was an email come out yesterday about some session next Tuesday. Came up from Justin. It was on planning for, you know, staff replacement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Session planning and business retention.
That's not, just so you're aware, that is person has their council meeting next Tuesday night. So you won't have anyone there for so including me. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. So in case you wondered why all of a sudden there was no shows in person, we have a council meeting, so we will be unable to attend. Thank you, Doug. I was having a brain cramp there in the heat.
Okay, Cory. Morning.
Morning, Warden. And thank you through you to council. This is a report updating Perth County Council in relation to where Perth County currently sits with their asset management plan and in relation to the Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen. To to note, you'll see is that the July one date is quickly approaching, and we're working hard and diligently to to get information as we've added a consultant to assist us in this process. But we will not be providing a July one asset measure plan to the province as the deadline that they have provided for us. The hopes within the report, the hopes is that we'll bring that back in September for the September meeting. We are working hard again. We do have some, we add some staff changes at in finance and as well as trying to bring them up to speed in this whole overall process. We've, we've, we're updating condition data in in the onset of just driving the what our service levels are. But there's other circumstances in 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 relation to the overall process that we're continuing to do. It does show poorly in performance for myself as the deadline is being passed. But if there's any questions in relation to the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Cory. Questions for Cory on the asset management report? Counselor McDermott.
I know, I understand that that must be an extremely hard report to come up with considering it's new and that. Will the province be okay with us being a month late with it? Like, will there any penalties or anything?
Through the warden to Counselor McDermott, there won't necessarily be penalties, but there is possibilities of withholding provincial transfers until they receive that that type of information from us with a updated asset management plan in relation to service levels on our core assets. So the timing wise is that July one will be passed, but it's not in a situation where we will be into twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four and not having something to the province to to appease them of their central milestones that they provided us. So there is the possibility of not getting provincial transfers in the time being, but that is overall in any reporting purpose for the province that they withhold those type of transfers. But they do, they've indicated that no, no leniency will be provided, but they do in the past have provided extended timeframes for municipalities that have approached them with this with these issues.
Okay, thanks, Cory.
Other questions for Cory? Don't see any. Just a general comment. I know there's different reports that have to be into the provincial government at certain deadlines. And the panel, or the threat is always they will withhold transport of money. But there's a lot of municipalities that aren't even remotely close to finding their F I Rs for the last couple of years, and it hasn't seemed to stop the flow of money there yet. Anyway, just a comment.
Okay, I have Sorry, sorry, Warren, just just to add to that, I believe the city is still working on their twenty twenty financial year end. City of Stratford is. I was watching one of their their subcommittees. So that in itself, they don't even have an audit for their twenty twenty year end.
Yeah, there's, they aren't the only one. You can go on the website and see who is all the way. I've actually done it. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives a two thousand and twenty-two Asset Management Plan Update Report. Moved by Counselor Duncan, seconded by Counselor McDermott. I believe had his hand up there. Any questions? Those in favor? That's Carrie. We're moving on. Okay. Public Works. Mr. John.
Thank you, Warden Hson. Good morning, council. Just a quick update on our two major facility projects, and then I'll turn it over to Gullner and Paul from Mayhew for a presentation. We are finally making some headway on the courthouse elevator project as the building permit was approved by the city of Stratford on June first. A designated substances survey was required for this project, and the report did identify some areas where substances were found in places like floor tiles, pipe insulation and wall plaster. Abatement must be performed on these areas, and that will become an additional cost of approximately ten thousand dollars. We did include a hundred thousand dollar contingency with the construction budget for this project, and that's to cover expenses such as this nature. This week, the contractor was in to put up hoarding and to coordinate construction and material laydown areas. The hoarding is almost complete, and we expect shoring and demolition to follow. Superior Court jury trials have taken a break for the summer and resume in mid-September, and the contractor has scheduled demolition, underpinning and constructing the elevator shaft during this time. We did receive an updated schedule yesterday, and that plans for the actual elevator installation to begin in early January twenty twenty-three with project completion now scheduled for mid-March twenty twenty-three. Today, we have Gullner and Paul from Mayhew who are leading the five Huron renovation and connecting Link Edition project, and will be presenting an update to council. Yesterday, a G technical engineer performed drilling and soils testing in the area between the courthouse and five Huron building, and the results of those samples will inform the design of the addition. And now I'll turn the floor over to Gullner and Paul.
Trying to log into your web meeting. Is it working? Maybe register. It just took me to Zoom, but I'll be able to get in.
Can you bring up in your presentation?
There we go. The most of council should remember these two individuals were with us when we had the meeting at the
Yes, and so we're here with an update as to how we're proceeding. Gullner is gonna actually run most of this presentation, but I just want to do just a just a quick intro and a quick update as to what you can expect from the presentation this morning. So we do have some fun stuff that you're gonna get to see. So we do have an updated layout that we'll work through today. Design, a design concept, and as well as some some thoughts around material finishes and colors. So start to see some of that take hold. As far as what we've completed, obviously, we've had some engagement sessions to to get to where we are. So the solution is driven by the needs of the business. Any of the external consultants that are needed in a project of this size are have been onboarded. They're on site, and they're working with us. I talked about the soil testing already, so that's part of that as well. Site survey has been completed. All the space programming has completed, and the site pre-plan approval is also being completed as well. So we are moving forward quickly. And, you know, based on today, the information today, we'll continue to move forward and move into design development and continue along on the schedule that was originally presented. Gullner is gonna give you a little bit more detail. You're actually not gonna hear from me much today, which is probably unusual with as we've been through this, but Gullner is the one to to present all of this, and as before, as we go through it, any questions, please just jump in and and we'll continue forward. Gullner, it's all yours.
Thanks. Good morning, everyone. So I am gonna dive into next slide. Next, the design vision and design approach. The vision for this space is to create a space that's professional collaborative. It's a space that has a sense of connection to the outdoors. So we're bringing in living, non-living green walls with textures and finishes. So there's a sense of nature within this space. We are going to implement energy efficiency, improve general lighting and accent lighting throughout the space. The space is flexible, it's task oriented, so it could accommodate any modes of work for a staff, the current staff and the near future staff. It should provide a variety of settings, again, to support different types of work, from quiet spaces to focused work and also energized collaborative type of work. This space is supporting current ways of working and facilitating collaboration regardless of where the staff is gonna work from. It will allow for a proper solution for the corporate records, storage, support, economic development, team with their storage, and as well as planning. It will also provide an overall cohesive space with enough storage, enough support spaces, and also support the growth for the Perth County. Next, please. In this building diagram, you'll see where the link, we we gave it a name for now, but we are calling it the link. So the link is the space between five Huron and one Huron, connecting the two buildings, becoming a shared space between between the two buildings, as well as supporting five Hurons' day-to-day business. Next, please. These two floor plans reflect the existing layout, the current service Uh these two floor plans um reflect the existing layout, the current um service Ontario layout. Uh on the main floor and the lower level. Um the dashed lines, the walls are in dashed, uh represent the walls that are coming out. So we have a more open space and we can re uh visit and reallocate space. Um based on the focus session, the feedback we received from the, from the teams um and uh. Supporting uh the design, the the vision of this space. So you'll see the um on this floor plan, this is the main floor including the link. Um you will see the different departments, this was uh driven out of the focus sessions we had uh with the Perth County teams and. Um based on the understanding we have where the teams should be um. Then should be um sitting or should, should be allocated space to the team. You'll see uh more public facing teams are on the main floor closer to the link. So it would uh make it easier interaction with the external clients. And then um the, the ones that are not so client facing and they are more internal facing are uh maybe towards the back of the space. And as well as the lower level. So on this floor, we have. Um we have a couple of, because this space is an open concept space, um open um office space, um. The need for telephone rooms, one like a small um spaces that people can take their personal calls or. Um have private conversations um have been allocated on this floor. Um the green areas um in the link, the light green areas are waiting areas that could be used uh for visitors. Uh for both Perth uh Perth County and the courthouse if needed. Um there are two existing washrooms that we are uh reutilizing, we are gonna. Take advantage of the existing location. We are adding two new washrooms in the link, one is a universal washroom to support the um. Need for any access accessible washroom. Um and there are two washrooms on the lower level and we'll get to that in a minute. Uh there is a janitor's space that is existing, so we are again not touching that, keeping it as is. Uh the reception in the, the rectangle in the pink is the uh service counter and the reception. With private uh that is secured access from uh the office space into the, into the reception area. Um. And it's um. It it's a first point of interaction for any external visitors that um. Is going to meet anyone from, from the Perth County team. Uh we have a few meeting rooms on this floor, one is a six-person meeting room um in within the link uh that. Could be used internally or externally. Uh there is another four meeting room. Uh between the C A O's office and a hoteling office. Uh which can be used, the hoteling office can be used for uh meeting space or if somebody's just. Uh coming in that day, needs to do a focus type of work and. Get into that room and have a heads down type of it um setting. Um. There's direct access to that private, to that meeting, the four-person meeting room from C A O's office. And there's another meeting room right in the center uh in the green, which appears a little darker here um under the purple. Um towards the back is another uh meeting space for six, six to seven people. Um. There is a space for C E M C. Um also on this floor, public works that the back, the space behind the reception is the area for public works. With a one private office and two workstations. Uh legislative services are also on this floor. Uh planning, economic development, planning is in the orange, uh economic development is in green. And they do have some hoteling stations uh for additional growth or touchdown spaces. Uh C A O, H R, communication are also on this floor. Uh there's an existing I T space which we are going to leave as is and use it um. Repurpose it and it will become the I T closet that's the also needed on this floor. Uh for I T support. Um you have uh one, two, three um additional hoteling workstations in this. Uh floor plan and one private office uh as a hoteling space. Um. There's also a print uh printing area uh right behind the washroom, so which can be used uh. Throughout the space, so it is a print slash severie and a small closet for um supporting the staff on this floor. And the central pink area is a collaborative, open collaborative space with a project wall, very dynamic, that sort of a setting for. Energized collaborative type of work. Um so that's the first floor, um next slide please. This is the lower level space allocation plan, which shows um again some open collaborative areas. Um additional washrooms on this uh lower level. There's a secondary janitor's closet in that space. There's a a good-sized lunchroom for staff. Um and and a large meeting room also is uh on the lower level. There is a wellness room uh right next to where the janitors is, which is technically a multipurpose uh space. Uh we named it wellness room, but it can be used for any other um. Variety of um uses. Um the finance and I T, including G I S are also on this floor. With an additional hoteling workstations for their future growth or any touchdown space they may require. There is a dedicated print area uh right across from G I S. And uh the corporate records and storage is that large area behind the finance and I T private office um. That's going to remain. Next one. Next page, thank you. So just diving a little bit into uh each area and um. To give you a bit of a sense of this space in terms of look and feel. Um this is slide shows the link. Um what are we envisioning about it, so we are envisioning a higher ceiling, bringing in greenery, wood textures. Accent lighting, um like a millwork uh solution for uh for the, for. Reception desk with a, with a secured access to it. Um that central space uh where there is like a uh block type of a um seating um. Can be um like an accent uh sort of an area. Um for any waiting or any informal conversations as well when uh between staffs or the staffs and external clients. Um and there is a um. Bit of an area for an additional waiting space uh which is shown at the bottom here. So the. Vision is to have um that a sense of welcoming space with Perth County's brand. Uh so the Perth County's brand should be strongly evident within this space um as the first point of interaction or first point of. Um impression uh for any external clients that walk into the space. Natural materials used to provide a a connection to the outdoors using timeless colors and finishes. And there's actually a meeting space on the uh bottom right corner as well. Uh just to give you a sense of how that uh setup could look like. Next please. On the main floor, just um, this is early in the process to. Re- really go in detail about furniture that we will, for that we will uh have a meeting with uh internal staff to just make sure. The uh workstations are supporting on uh them on their, on their day-to-day tasks. But these are high-level ideas how the workstations could look like. Um we could have a hi- higher panels, we could have a glass above where you see the panels uh for additional visibility. But every staff would have their own um open concept, uh sort of a cubicle, um. There could be height adjustable desks or big height desks. Um the new offices uh right at the south side of the plan. Uh would have all glass fronts uh to just open up this space furthermore and because the um. Windows um. Are all on the south perimeter, that could bring in the additional light into this space. And private uh offices could have a setting uh similar to what's shown there. Uh with uh guest seating, storage, um. Uh again, we'll go in more detail when we get to that, to the stage of uh developing the furniture. Next please. Um there are open and closed meeting and collaborative areas uh within this space to support uh the team's work and uh. Im- improve and support innovation, um the. Open collaborative um meeting space in the center, uh we have envisioned it as a large wall with um. Opportunity to write on it, so right over, right, writing, writable surfaces. It could be backpainted, uh glass walls that people can write on or list the projects and. Collaborate easily, it's flexible furniture uh set up in front of it, so it can, you can add to it, you can take away from it, so there's a. Lot of dynamics around that area. And the soft seating, more informal, casual type of meetings, uh. Uh you will see uh next, between the hoteling office and C A O's office space. Uh could provide another opportunity for a different type of. Um seating environment and having uh maybe. Uh more of a. Less informal or, or it could be even a formal um meeting, but it just provides a. Um less, more of a casual seating area. And then uh there is a mute box also added on this space, which is a great furniture solution. For uh providing a phone booth uh when we have open office uh concepts. To support the staffs with their um personal calls if they don't feel comfortable speaking. Taking their personal calls or even uh work calls uh in the open concept area. Next please. In the lower level, we are going to uh maximize uh. The space by um. Bringing in um lighter um palette, so it feels uh more opened up, more expanded. Um the meeting space um we've, that's shown in the. Lower left side, um we can bring in some interesting accents uh on the ceiling uh with baffles. Um everything that's going to be introduced within this space should have a, should, should have a function, so. Any element that goes in this space will, will serve a purpose. So the baffles above the desk, above the uh table um. Would help with the sound and acoustics of this space. And we'll uh design the lining around the baffles, making sure that we are. Uh not lowering the ceiling any further, we give that a sense of expansion. Um as well as being, being able to incorporate them into the baffles. So these are the options we are looking into further into the design development phase, but um. Just giving it a sense of expansion is is uh super important, especially for the lower level. Um that top uh image uh sort of represents the wellness room. Um again, this is a high-level con-. Con- concept or inspiration image for that space. Um but we can again bring in some wood finishes, making that room. Um comfy cozy for someone to take fifteen minutes perhaps uh if they need to um. Just do. Getting back to the norm, to the uh routine of the day. Um and then lockers at the back that can be used uh by everyone throughout the space, you can bring in color, we can bring in. Wood finishes again, there's so much opportunity there. To add interest to the space as well as supporting the staff's need for additional storage. Uh for their personal stuff as well. Um next please. This page um. Uh showcases the overall palette or the overall approach uh when it comes to um. Colors, uh finishes and materiality. So again, we are going for natural, uh neutral colors and natural uh type of finishes. Bringing in greenery, using uh Perth County's uh branding colors of the. A deep green and the, and the golden yellow um as accent and then neutralizing that with whites and grays. Um. Bringing in wood baffles uh for acoustics. Um lighter color carpets and um L V Ts on the floor. Um so all of these uh we will present again um in the next step when we come back with finishes um. To your team. So next slide please. Um just to give you a high-level schedule update, um. We are uh aiming for um completing the design development phase early August and then going for permit and tender. Uh sometime around late October, um and then construction uh start day is set at uh in January twenty twenty-three. Um that's the current schedule that we are working uh towards. Next please. And the next step with, for us is to come back to you uh with the design development package and present it to you um. At your next um. The council meeting and uh we are also working towards submitting to the heritage committee for review. And getting that off the ground uh ahead of time will help with the permit process. And yeah, that's it uh for me, if uh you have any questions, uh I am happy to answer those. Uh and if you need us to go to a certain slide and zoom in in any areas, please let us know and we can do that as well.
Okay, thank you very much, uh questions from council or comments, I see Deputy Ward and Nagus with a hand up there.
Seems to be an awful lot of meeting rooms, there's a meeting room in the lake, there's a meeting room in the basement, there's. Meeting rooms and hotel rooms or whatever, the hoteling rooms on the main floor. Personally, I'd like to see staff have bigger offices and and more uh room for them to work as opposed to having all these little meeting areas.
Thanks for your question, uh based on our focus session, we understood that there need, there is a need for um. Because the teams are working in a hybrid mode and that is gonna continue on um for some time. Um there is a need for uh kind of bringing the teams together uh when they are in the office to collaborate on projects and collect. So this was driven out of a focus session uh that we've had with the teams. Um so John, uh if you would like to um add to that.
Um yeah, through the board and uh what, what I think is, if if there is anything, we we did uh. We did remove at least one meeting room in, in the current layout to, to provide a, a private office as well, so. Uh there, there was more meeting rooms, but we've kind of scaled that down and then there's different settings of meeting rooms as, as well, just. To, for, for different types of uh collaboration and or. Uh you, you know, more of a workstation meeting.
Um I, I would like to also add that um. We are, we, we really hope for this space to be as flexible as possible for the needs of Perth County, so I, if. In the future, there is a need for additional office, there is less need of um. Meeting spaces, some of these meeting spaces can convert easily to a private office, say.
And if I could, if I could, you were just to comment on uh work setting size, I think it's a great question, you know, bigger work. You know, bigger workstations, bigger offices, we have the space. We're also designing to standards. Standards that are put in place through something called G C Workplace, federal government standard. And that relates to what people do. So back in the day, we would see workstations that were nine by nine and they would have three surfaces within those workstations. But today we're down to six by six, six by seven. A project right now that's six by eight and we're all going, Lord, those, those workstations are massive because of what we are now doing. We're now going down and using technology, so we're comfortable doing a lot of our individual activities on a single surface. So it allows us to be a little bit more efficient, but then it allows us to use the space for other things like those meeting spaces. And it's about, it's about choice and control. So there's two types of meeting spaces on that first floor. There's a six-person meeting space where if we want to be very formal in our meeting and we want to present things and maybe have more of a direct conversation, that's the space to do that. But maybe we don't want to have that type of meeting and maybe it's more, you know, we just kind of need to get together to work through a problem and have a more comfortable conversation. And that's the trend that we're seeing. It's, I hate the term, but it's just resumeral, if you will. You know, if you think of your family discussions, where do they happen? They happen in a great room, they happen in a kitchen, they happen in the comfortable environments with, I certainly don't, you know, want to have to have that family discussion that I usually lose. I don't do that in the dining room. We don't sit around the formal dining room table and have family discussions. You know, it happens in a more comfortable environment. It brings people's guards down. So it really changes the way people are interacting and those are the trends and the themes that, that space is being created right now. So we're following that, that trend as well.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Duncan?
Yeah, my question just relates to the accessibility aspect of the lower space. How, how would that be accessible? I only see a stairwell in the, in the drawings.
Sorry, I did not point that out. There is going to be an elevator added to this space, so it is an accessible space. If we can go back to the floor plan, lower level.
Slide eight, John.
I can point where that is and I apologize for not pointing it out earlier. Yes, even, that's it. Yes, that's where the new elevator is going to go in. And it's obviously on the second floor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can go back to, there we go. Other comments or questions? Laurie?
So through the Warden, thank you. And to council, the space has been developed with staff input. And, you know, when we're working in this space, the idea is that we have those those individual work areas where people are task-oriented. And we work much more in a team setting, is my observation, certainly over the last four years. From when I started, you have your task areas and then you can quickly pull people together, go in a small meeting space, work out your issue and talk about our programs. And we work on reports together now, so it is, it is good to have those, those spaces. They're not large meeting spaces by any stretch, but certainly they do give us that flexibility of modernizing how we actually work. So I just wanted down to that.
Other comments or questions? Not seeing any. I want to thank you very much for your presentation. And basically what this does is provide council with an update. And it's not the final finished product. They're going to be back and I think you said August, perhaps, Lefont?
Yes.
So you will be seeing this again, but we wanted you to be aware that no, we haven't forgotten about this and yes, we are moving forward. And, you know, all the stakeholders or staff have been involved all along. So it's not going to be a surprise to a lot of people. But no, I do thank you for your part. It's a great update and there's no more questions. We're going to move on. Okay, so I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Facility Project Updates Report. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Willham. Let me see your hand up over there. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on because we do have a couple of councillors that may have to leave for business reasons. Council reports. Any hands, bylaws? We don't have any. Notice of motions? I don't believe we have any. Other business? Anybody got anything to bring up under other business? Not seeing anything. Announcements? Anybody got anything for announcements? Not seeing anything. Next is closed session. And I have a motion that County Council moves into closed session at approximately 10:15 a.m. in accordance with section 239 of the Municipal Act to deal with a matter pertaining to security of municipal property negotiations, that's Public Works, a matter pertaining to labor relations and a second matter pertaining to labor relations. Moved by Counselor Hurlick, seconded by Counselor, is that your hand up or is that just, okay, yeah, it is? Okay, those in favor? That's carried. We're in closed session, so we're going to have to stop here. Okay, so we're back in live session. And the only thing left, left to do is the confirmatory bylaw. And I have confirmatory bylaw 388-2022 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting held June 16, 2022. It's ready first, second and third time and finally passed on June 16, 2022. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Deputy Warden Nagus. Those in favor? That's carried. And a motion to adjourn the meeting 11:31. Moved by Counselor Ike, seconded by Counselor Hurlick. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. And the meeting is adjourned.